At this time, it is my distinct pleasure to call the February 22nd, 2023 meeting of your Hanover Borough Council to work. Request we all stand and recite our beloved Pledge of Allegiance in unison. We will follow that with a brief moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, let's call the roll.
Mr. Fuentes, Mrs. Spock, here. Mrs. Greenholt, here. Mr. Greenholt.
Here.
Mr. Hedberg.
Here.
Mr. Kress.
Here.
Mr. Lockard.
Here.
Mr. Ricart.
Here.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
Dr. Rupp.
She's here, she must have just stepped away.
Solicitor Schultis.
Here.
Manager Lewis.
Present.
Mayor Whitman.
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll announce that an executive session was held prior to this current meeting, this evening from approximately 6:30 till just before 7:00, involving the corresponding sections of the Sunshine Act, that being Cherry Tree Court Special Exception Approval under Section 708a4 and 5. Moving along in the agenda, we have the distinct honor of Senator Kristen Phillips-Hill has asked to come out tonight and be given a few moments to speak. Senator, welcome.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Borough Council President, Madam Mayor, and members of Borough Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to share a few words. My name is Kristen Phillips-Hill. I have the pleasure of serving as the state senator in the 28th District, and now, as a result of redistricting, Hanover is in the 28th District, and I can tell you that I am so excited to be able to represent this borough, its citizens, and tell you that over the last three months that I have had this pleasure, it's been so wonderful to spend time here, to get to know many Hanoverians, and patronize businesses, restaurants, and spend time with many of you. So I really just wanted the opportunity to say, this is who I am, let you know that you can find me. My website is SenatorKristin.com. It's Kristen with two I's, K-R-I-S-T-I-N. I'm on a whole host of social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, YouTube, and you can call, you can write, but if there's ever anything that you need, we stand ready to assist you, and we're looking forward to doing good things together. I really appreciate that each and every one of you are willing to serve in the trenches of local government, and when we work together, things work better for the citizens that we serve. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but really just wanted the opportunity to say, thank you, and this is who I am, and this is where you can find me.
Thank you, Senator Hill.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Kristen, I just, you know, we've worked together for several years, you, Sue Ann, and I, and I'm just happy for everybody to get to meet you, and you're a great person, and, you know, welcome to Hanover, right?
Well, thank you. I can't think of a better place to be. So, so much opportunity, it's exciting. So thank you for all that you're doing, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and hopefully we'll accomplish some good things. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Hey, Kristen.
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of people being able to contact you, I have something that someone sent to me, but I'm gonna turn it over to you, because it's more up your alley.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll certainly see what we can do with this.
So that would be a question, like, what would things, in other words, when people are gonna contact somebody, we have Kate Clunk, our state rep, and then there's you, are there different things that people should contact you versus her?
You know, I have served in the State House with Representative Clunk. As a matter of fact, we were both elected in 2014, and we shared an office for her first two terms in office and my short but eventful tenure in the State House. Certainly, there are many things that we can do that are very similar, and we have a great working relationship, which will be very helpful should the borough need assistance with any state agency, department, seeking a state-related grant. Having a letter from both a state senator and a state representative is certainly helpful and increases the odds of you being successful in acquiring that grant. As a state senator, one of the things that I have the constitutional obligation of the nomination and confirmation process, so we have a newly-elected governor, he will be nominating, or he has nominated, individuals to serve as cabinet secretaries, and right now going through that process of meeting them, talking to them, so if you have concerns about any state-related program, agency, department, please let me know, because we are in that process of having those meetings, and it's a great opportunity for me to be able to share with the potentially incoming secretary of the Department of Environmental Protection, or Transportation, or Labor and Industry, your concerns and get you answers, right? They're very responsive when they would like to have your vote in the confirmation process. So now is a great time, if you have those issues. But certainly, Representative Clunk and I will work together for the betterment of this community.
And I just wanted to point out to everybody, she was elected by her colleagues to serve as the Senate Majority Caucus Chair.
Which was a great honor. It's always nice to be recognized by your peers for a leadership position. Previously chaired the Communications and Technology Committee, currently of serving as its vice chair, also sit on Aging and Youth Appropriations, Banking and Insurance, and State Government Committees, as well as the Legislative Budget and Finance Committee, which is bicameral and does a lot of good financial work. So, again, if you have specific issues that need to be addressed with any state department or agency, please get in touch. Now is the time to let us know, and hopefully we'll be able to find resolution for you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. See, thank.
President Ricart, I can vouch for the fact that she's here lots of times in Hanover, not just at this meeting, she's at lots of events and places, so I appreciate that. So, thank you.
I brought my better half with me this evening. He's a big fan of Hanover, so yes, yes, thank you.
Next up, we have a couple junior councilors to welcome into the fold, potentially.
If we only want tonight is here.
We have one, Mayor Whitman, you're gonna handle that for us, correct?
I am.
Off you go.
I don't know what happened to Thea, I talked to Thea this afternoon, she'll see at seven o'clock, so maybe something came up.
Make it official.
Do you have a picture to take, a phone? My phone's in my car, take a picture. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. First, I'm gonna say aye, and then you're gonna say aye in your name, okay? So, aye.
Aye, lovey-huston.
Do solemnly pledge.
Do solemnly pledge.
That I accept.
That I accept.
The position of.
The position of.
Hanover Borough.
Hanover Borough.
Junior councilperson.
Junior councilperson.
I promise to attend.
I promise to attend.
Monthly council meetings.
Monthly council meetings.
Observe Borough Council.
Observe Borough Council.
Meeting rules.
Meeting rules.
And actively participate.
And actively participate.
In Borough business.
In Borough business.
I understand.
I understand.
That I cannot vote.
That I cannot vote.
On any issue.
On any issue.
And I cannot attend.
And I cannot attend.
Executive sessions.
Executive sessions.
That's it. You're official. All right.
This way. There we go, two pretty ladies in the same shop.
Yeah, so her father is on the school board as well, so it's tradition, like, we're gonna serve your community.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Thanks, Scott.
You send them to me.
Yes, I'm certain, well.
Before we move on, Madam Mayor, can I ask council to look at their agenda? Item 6C.
Six what?
Item 6C, and request a motion for the nomination of both. Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second?
Seconds, I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Now it's officially official.
All right.
Madam Mayor, you have another award or appreciation? Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah. Gotta get another phone. I still want that video playing, looping. Okay. So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize Mr. Mayor for his 47 years of dedicated service to the wastewater treatment for the Hanover Borough.
Were you like four years old when you started? I don't know.
All right. When Tim was first hired, he was an operator at the wastewater treatment plant from November 1975, I like this part, making $3.52 an hour, until he served as the lab technician in April 1987. In March of 1989, he was promoted to supervisor of the wastewater treatment plant until January of 2012, when he became the superintendent of water and wastewater treatment. One of Tim's favorite statements is that he is one of the smartest people he knows. But seriously, Tim was always good-humored and joking with all. He had no enemies or people that did not enjoy being around him. He was a dedicated employee who accumulated a vast wealth of knowledge throughout his tenure, and was always willing to share this vast wealth of knowledge with anyone who needed assistance. A few years ago, Terry Sterner, the former water filtration plant supervisor, and Tony Thomas, were getting water samples in the boat from the clear lake at the water filter plant, when for some unknown reason, Tony Thomas decided to stand up and made the boat capsize. He was terrified they had killed Terry. Just as they were both swimming to shore, Tim pulled up and said something typical of Tim, like, "Great day for a swim, boys."
And that's treated water, wasn't it?
Yeah, treated water. Treat it all over again. And Tony wanted nothing but your time then to throw Tim in the lake.
I got a little bit honored, too.
Last year, Tim was seen on camera sweating down in the lab at the wastewater plant, wearing his athletic cut jeans.
Yeah.
Athletic cut jeans and brand-new cowboy boots, when a rock the size of a dime jumped up in front of him, causing him to go down hard. The best part is that he recorded the video experience on his own phone, so that he could share it with everyone. This has proved that Tim can make a joke even at his own expense, and I really wanted it up on the TV screens, looping, as I did this. You'll just have to. And he is happy to show it to you after this. So Tim would be glad to show you this video after the meeting, but if Tim asks you if you would like to see his x-ray.
No, I don't.
Your answer should be no.
Stealing from that.
Now I do. He will be greatly missed by his coworkers, but they all wish him good health and a long happy retirement with his family and friends. Thank you for serving the borough for 47 years, and we have provided him with the official certificate of appreciation for his 47 years of dedicated service.
Thank you.
So we thank you.
There's just one thing you missed in that little speech, is the common man never probably would have made it this long in his career.
All right. Thank you.
I wanna say something. I took it off my payroll.
I'm gonna miss that, Tim.
Tim, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your help. I mean that very sincerely.
Okay, as we segue into the public comment portion of the meeting, I am charged with the responsibility of regretfully pointing out that we do not have electronic means of communication as in a two-way street from our online electronic followers as we typically have in the past. What I mean by that is, my understanding is, you can see and hear us in electronic land, but we cannot see nor hear you. So, thanks for hanging in there, and just before you try to reach out and maybe contact us, we have no means of hearing you, so please try again next month, I believe we'll have it resolved till then. At this point in time, I will officially open the public comment portion of the meeting to anyone who is here, and we have, again, moved into a process whereby, if you have the ability to sign in and give us who you are and what you'd like to speak to, we will recognize you first. Tonight, I have one, it is Mr. Redding.
Yes.
Alan, would you like to come forward? We'll give you a seat at the center table, name, address for the record, and say what you'd like to say.
Alan Redding, 300 West Hanover Street. Been a longtime borough resident. Anyways, I just wanted to let everybody know how good of a job I'm so proud of our code enforcement department here of late, trying to clean up the community. It's about time. We finally gave them some teeth to do their job, and I'm sure everybody at this table, along with myself, are good citizens of the community. We keep our properties in good shape, and we hate to see our neighborhoods fall into blight with slum lords, burned-out buildings, whatnot. So anyways, I'd like to say thank you, and maybe we'll get people to move into the community instead of leaving, so it's a good thing. So I just wanted to say thank you all for your work on that end of the table, and that's it.
Thanks, Alan.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Yep. I believe our other junior councillor member came, so Mayor, I'm gonna slip you back in here, in the middle of public comment, and we'll give her the oath of office.
You're next. All right, hang up, I'm gonna do the additional oath of office. Putting you up here, so the camera can just face out, that way the camera can see you. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Do solemnly pledge. Do solemnly pledge. That I accept. That I accept. The position of Hanover Borough Junior Councilperson. I promise to attend. I promise to attend. Monthly council meetings. Because I have a second. Observe Borough Council. Meeting rules. And actively participate. And Borough business. I understand that I cannot vote on any issue, and I cannot attend executive sessions. That is it. Now, I guess you have to do your deal again?
No, we already, we didn't vote, so she's gonna.
Okay, all right.
This way, please. Look, there we go. Perfect, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
The good news is, young ladies, you do get the same pay as council, so you can't vote, but it's not all, it's not all for long. We have a late entry in the public speaking engagement. Tammy Gobreck, you're welcome to come forward and address council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You should start to know my face by now. I'm Tammy Gobreck, and I reside at 717 Ash Drive, and I'm here again, and I'm gonna show up at every meeting that I can to have the borough consider rejecting the Joe Myers development at the end of our Ash Drive Street. I've looked at the zoning ordinances that were based on the approval that the zoning board gave, and, you know, I'll be upfront, that, how they could approve that based on the one criteria that has to be in conformance with our neighborhood, or the surrounding properties. And I encouraged all of you last week, or two weeks ago when I met, to walk our neighborhood, look at the time and commitment we've put into our homes, and walk the rail trail, and see what this development is gonna do to that area. And I'm gonna keep saying, I hope you overturn that agreement or that zoning decision to not allow that property to go in there. Just for the record, there's 130 townhomes that are, or not townhomes, 130 garden apartments approved through the zoning, and we live in a nice neighborhood, that most of our homes are 2,000 square foot, and we've put a lot of work into our homes, and most of our lives go into those homes, and right next to us is gonna be garden apartments, like Mr. Myers has proposed, that'll be 600 and 700 square feet. I just can't even fathom how that can be in conformance with our neighborhood, and I'm gonna keep talking about it, and hopefully you guys come see it, and it sinks in that it's just not what our neighborhood needs. So, thank you. I know it was suggested I meet with Mr. Myers or Ben Myers, and I'm going to do that to see if we can get him to commit to something other than those apartments, so, just a full disclosure, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to me.
Anyone else before we close the public comment? Sure.
I didn't fill out a little card. I'm Tara Kaufman, 745 Spruce Drive, I don't know if that's what you need. I just, real quickly, obviously, the Myers development is happening in my backyard, so I'm biased, I'll be the first to say that, but I really hope, I understand that it's about money, builders wanna make money, I get that, I totally get that, but as the Borough Council, the people that are shaping the future of this community, we already have over 50% rental properties, and, you know, I've rented plenty of properties in my day. I own a home now, I've lived there for a good 25 years, and I do know that in a community, when people purchase a home, when they buy a home, they're maybe a little more invested in taking care of the community and caring about it, they're not as transient, they don't move as much. I just hope, as the leaders and the people that are making the decisions in this town, that you will really take this to heart and think about, is this really what we want? And again, I'll be the first to say, I'm biased, but, you know, I can move if I want, so, you know, but I care about Hanover, I raised my kids here, I hate to see it just turn into a transient, you know, even more so, so, just my two cents, and thank you. I know you all are doing the best you can, but I hope you take that to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry about the disruptions earlier.
Anyone else? Public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move into the printed part of the agenda, that, the first of which order being the approval of the consent agenda. Chair respects a motion and a second for such motion of business.
And make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. With that, we'll move into Council of Workshop, Finance, and Personnel being the first. Council Rowland?
Okay, I'll start with item number one, consideration of a motion to approve the AFL-CIO, or the Ask Me Blue labor contract, to be effective January 1 of this year through December 31 of 2027. Second.
Any discussion required? I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
One opposed, two opposed?
Yes.
Any more than two? Okay, motion carries. Council Rowland?
Okay, item two, consideration of a motion to approve the restitution settlement in the matter of Commonwealth versus Joyce C. Barden, case 3051, from 1989.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, consideration of a motion to approve the settlement agreement in a matter of J.A. Myers Building and Development Incorporated versus Hanover Borough and the Hanover Borough Council.
So that, well, that may require just a little definition by Solicitor Schultis, just to be clear of specifically what we're referring to here.
Solicitor Schultis, you've been asked to clarify the motion.
Would you mind?
Sure.
Doing that, sir?
So, as we announced at the last meeting, on August 31, 2022, Joseph Myers filed an application to the zoning hearing board for a special exception approval for 120-unit garden apartment on property located in Cherry Tree Court in Hanover. At the time of the application, it was one day prior to the borough first advertising its public notice on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which, if ultimately adopted, would have changed the zoning district of that property. Because the application came in one day prior to our first notice, the ordinance which applied to his application was the ordinance in effect at that time. During the pendency of our ordinance process, Mr. Myers filed a complaint against the borough and Borough Council for allegedly violating Act 65 of 2021 by not adequately listing the proposed zoning ordinance amendment on its public agenda. Of course, we disputed that. Essentially, Myers filed that in order to provide a belt-and-suspenders type of issue with respect to his application. Their ultimate goal was to prevent us from enacting the ordinance. We actually did enact the ordinance, which changed the zoning applicable to the property, but the zoning in effect at the time of his application is, was the applicable ordinance. So he agreed to discontinue his lawsuit with prejudice, provided that the borough agreed to apply the zoning ordinance in effect at the time of his application, which we were bound to do in any event by law. So the settlement just signifies that he's discontinuing his litigation.
So the point, the gist of it is, this says that he has the ability to do this, but whatever plans and whatever are not approved, or anything like that, is that a fair summarization?
Well, as we know, the zoning hearing board approved his application for a special exception, now he has to go through if he proceeds through the land development process. That's a whole separate process.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that everybody knew, understood the differences in what was going on, so we have a motion and a second, I believe?
We do. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And Solicitor Schultis, thank you. Number four, consideration of a motion to award the joint municipal bids for materials and supplies as set forth in Agenda Attachment A, as per the bid specifications.
So.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will segue into public work. We will segue into Public Works and Facilities. Counselor Kress.
Okay, number one, consideration of a motion to approve the basis of design study report for the proposed North Street Public Safety and Administration Facility and the Cougar Drive Public Works Water Resources Campus, and to engage with Ucart Horn Architects for Phase Two Professional Architectural Design and Engineering Services per their proposal dated February 15, 2023.
Second.
All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Turning to page three, I think that's a misprint there. It's still with you, Counselor Kress.
Number two, consideration of a motion to approve change order number one for the library roof replacement contract to provide for additional mechanical for roof access in the amount of $14,443.
Second.
All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kress. We will move into Public Safety. Counselor Lockard, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request consideration of a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the process to designate a new school zone for the Head of Street School through the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
The motion.
Second.
The second, and all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
On that post.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
But I did want to say something. In the Public Safety Committee meeting, as we stated at our finance meeting, we are going through with a questionnaire for the people of Hanover in regards to tenant and landlords, those who own property, private property, business people, will have input, will have input in regards to the finale of our workshop. And our workshop will be at the end of the results of the questionnaire. This may, and we're getting a setup for the questionnaire. Part of that involvement will be Chris Miller, our code enforcement. He's, has quite a bit of knowledge. Also, Tony Klausert, our fair chief. And if anybody has anything that they feel is pertinent for the questionnaire, you can get ahold of Margie, correct? Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so that the workshop itself will be the finale of everything that we have accumulated in the questionnaire. So feel free to become part of it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Plank Commission.
Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Planning.
Ew, I got a different agenda.
Darling.
Okay, we will go to Mr. Hagberg.
Come on, Chuck, man.
I got the old one.
Oh.
Which I thought was the new one.
It's okay. Consideration of a motion accepting the J.A. Myers Building and Development Royal Building Incorporated offered to grant the Borough an extension of time until June 30, 2023 for consideration of the approval of the Cherry Tree Preliminary Land Development Plan in accordance with Section 508 of the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, allowing additional time to address and review comments and zoning hearing conditions.
Second.
Yep.
Any questions on that one? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move into the mayor's report.
All righty. My report for January 2023. Since our guest of honor is here, this is perfect. January 3, I was honored to attend the swearing-in ceremony for Senator Kristen Phillips-Hill at the Capitol. Senator Phillips-Hill begins her second term in the Senate of Pennsylvania for the 28th District. She was also elected by her colleagues to serve as the Senate Majority Caucus Chair. During the ceremony, she gave the nominating speech for Senator Kim Ward, the first woman to be elected the Senate President Pro Tempore. And she was elected unanimously by the entire Senate. I am looking forward to working with Senator Phillips-Hill as she is an involved, intelligent, diligent, and actionable present Senator who has and continues to get to know Hanover and our citizens. The only problem is she always brings that guy with her. I would encourage everyone to visit the Capitol as the Senate Chamber is magnificent. It was like, wow, you're sitting in there. January 11, Council members Hagberg, Rupp, and I welcomed Raymore Flanican Furniture and Mattresses to Hanover with a purple ribbon cutting celebration. They are a certified great place to work, encourage their associates to serve their communities, and have an in-house recycling program which recycles 99% of packaging materials diverting 20 million pounds from landfills every year. I am happy that they have repurposed the old Wolf Furniture Store on Eisenhower Drive. The showroom is beautiful, and the staff is ready to serve your needs. January 12, the Tree of Life Personal Care held their ribbon cutting ceremony and gave tours of the newly refurbished facility. They provide personal care, trips and transportation, in-house activities and entertainment, grooming services, safety and security, healthy nutritious meals, and more. I loved the large mesmerizing fish tank they had in the lobby. They are located on Railroad Street next to the library. The ceremony was attended by the Hanover Chamber, Main Street Hanover, State Rep Kate Klunk, and over 250 people from the public. January 18, the Gladfelder Agency sponsored the Chambers Eye Opener Breakfast. TGA representatives presented on employer health clinics, building valuations, and risk management strategies. Borough manager Margie Lewis and Senator Kristen Phillips-Hill attended with me. January 23, Hanover Trolley Trail and Borough officials met to review the feasibility study draft of the rail trail downtown connector. We discussed near-term and long-term plans, wayfinding, signage, and on-road routes to bring rail trail users safely downtown to enjoy our sites, shops, restaurants, and roof hubs. January 26, Senator Phillips-Hill, State Rep Kate Klunk, Main Street, and I joined the York County Economic Alliance in congratulating Fat Bat Brewing on using their Bloom Grant for their new bicycle repair station that is open to the public and located in Bank Lane. I commend Fat Bat Brewing on all the positive energy and their involvement and commitment to the downtown. January 27, the National Red Sand Project and the YWCA Safe Home held their annual event to bring awareness to human trafficking. This highly profitable crime is the illegal exploitation of a person through force, fraud, or coercion. It occurs in every part of the world and can happen to anyone, any age, race, or gender. There is sex trafficking, forced labor, and domestic servitude. Every year, thousands of cases are reported while many go unnoticed. Events like the Red Sand Project helped to bring this crime out of the shadows. Hanover PD detectives Stumpen Campo, Penn Township police officers, Senator Phillips-Hill, State Rep Kate Klunk, Safe Home staff and I poured red sand in the sidewalk cracks to symbolize the victims of human trafficking that fall through the cracks. We are grateful to the amazing Safe Home staff and the YWCA. We appreciate all they do for domestic violence and human trafficking victims and their diligence to bring awareness to these ever-increasing societal issues. That concludes my report for that, but I also want to make everybody aware that on March 16, from 6 to 8, there, there will be a meeting or an open house at the Guthrie Memorial Library for the Comprehensive Park Recreation Open Space and Bike Ways Plan. As of today, it went live on our Borough webpage and our fate Borough web, Facebook page. I'm going to put it on my page and get it out there, that we are inviting everyone to complete this survey, making us aware of what you would like to see in our parks, any ideas that you have, how you'd like these spaces used, and what you would like included in them or maybe improved. So, we invite you to do that. They would like that in by March 13, the survey, so they can have those results compiled and be able to present them March 16 at the open house. However, the, the survey will be available all summer long. So, all right.
Is there a form somewhere to respond?
Yeah, also, there will be hard copies at the library for people to complete. If you don't have a computer, you can go to the library, and they'll set you up on one of the computers to take the survey. Or like I said, you can go on our Borough website, which is hanoverboroughpa.gov. It should be on there, the link to take the survey. Or you can go on our Facebook page, which is Hanover Borough Government, and the link is on there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
All right.
Done? Got you. Okay, do we have a fire commission report, Chief Klausert? You're walking forward, I'll take that as a yes.
We do.
Good.
Thank you for the opportunity to keep you informed. I will apologize if I seem a little disheveled when you talked about Tim's x-ray, it just brought back memories. So, so, real quick, at the last meeting, we reviewed the budget. In January, we should be at about 8.3% of our budget, and we're trending just under that. Our revenue is at 10.2% from our EMS billing, so that's a positive. So we're happy about that. Again, it's very early, it's ultimately January. Hopefully by March, we'll be able to give a, a better review of where we're heading budget-wise and revenue-wise. I believe I spoke at the last meeting, I can't recall, we had a gas leak at a Ward Park Station. The underground gas line from the gas main into the building leaked, developed a leak. For years and years and years, we were always told that up the street at the High Street Facility for Columbia Gas, years ago, they put Mercaptin, which is the thing that smells like rotten eggs, into the natural gas. And because of the years of not being, leaking into the ground and whatnot, if we smelled natural gas, it was coming from the storm sewers, from the, that stuff leaching into the ground. So for years, we smelled gas and just attributed to that, until we started smelling it inside the building. And that's when we called Columbia Gas, and they come out and found the leak. And that was replaced.
Was that on our side of the meter or their side?
Yep, it was on our side. So, I tried, but they wouldn't help us out. We talked a little bit about the pump at the last time, so we did order that, and the lease agreement was executed. You'll notice that this month, you did not get a fire report because at the end of December, the fire report program that I use, it was called Firehouse Reporting Software, and the company that bought that stopped supporting it and will not do anything with it after the first of the year. So we transitioned to a new system that our EMS providers use, and we're still in the process of building those reports that we need to give you the information that you want to hear. And if there is any information, report-wise, that you'd like to see that you don't see, please either let Counselor Recart or Counselor Lockard or even Counselor Kress know, and they can forward that to me for the fire commission reports. We had our business administrator resign already. We are looking at, with finance and personnel right now, what direction we want to head, so we'll, we'll have more of that in the future. We have been able to locate, our finance committee and personnel committee, we're able to locate a business person who was interested in being our seventh member. He came to the meeting last Thursday to observe, and he must have made a good impression because he decided he will do it. And that is Mike Newman, the owner of Panda Baker's funeral home on Broadway. So, we're very happy to have him on board. And finally, I had a few questions about some placards that I posted throughout the town. There are the square orange placards with the white X and why they're there. So those placards are for the fire department, they're, they're do not enter placards. You'll see them in other cities as well. York City uses them as, as well. And what they, what they mean are that the building, or situations in the building that I don't feel safe with our guys going in. If, if it's an abandoned building, severe hoarding, structural issues, things like that. The address on York Street that you see is pretty prominent if you come up York Street. That is a situation where the owner has passed, Coats has been working on it, and that is a severe hoarding condition with rodent activity, so there's no reason for us to go in. We're more concerned about the properties on either side and saving those, those properties. The other one will be on Eagle Avenue, right down the street from, right down the alley, rather, from the middle, the elementary school and the firehouse, or the fire museum, rather. And that was some structural issues inside, and there were some needles found in the backyard by Coats. So, assuming that there's needles in the backyard, I don't want guys crawling through needles and drug paraphernalia. And that is pretty much the gist of what, what transpired at the meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Chief, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Was talking about the EMS receivables.
Yes.
Could we add that aged receivable balance to your monthly report? Because I know in the past, or could be quarterly is good enough. I know that's, that's been an issue.
Yes.
But I think we should keep our eyes on that, both ourselves and Penn Township, to make sure that, you know, we don't have a big liability out there. And your new controller or whatever can decide, you know, how they want to do it, show the aging and so forth.
So, I, for the rest of the council, what Counselor Rowland was referring to is, we bill insurance companies and whatnot, and there's automatic write-offs, and then there's delays on those bills coming in, and those become aged. And there are receivables that we should be getting, but for whatever reason, we're not getting them in a timely fashion. And some of them can add up to quite a bit of money. So, and he's, he's exactly right. It's something we want to keep our eyeballs on and make sure that we're doing what we can to, to make sure that that money's coming back to us.
Exactly. If there's somewhere, something in there you need help with, then, you know, maybe we can somehow help you. I don't, I don't know what to do there, but.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Chief. Thank you. We will move into the final public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone, wants a second bite of that apple, present? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and read for, just a reminder that there is a very exciting conditional-use public hearing Tuesday, February 28, right back here at 6:00 PM. Counsel, certainly, we need to be here. You all can choose to be if you'd like. I would call your attention to the printed agenda, to the monthly meeting schedule for the month of March. Anything else? Chair requests a motion to adjourn, please.
So motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We are adjourned. Jim, bye.